The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA 7 or Time Warner Cable.
What's your tomorrow?
I'd like to call a board meeting to order. We're going to begin tonight with some opening remarks. Oh, first of all, seven board members are present and we're joined at the table by Dr. Michelle Langenfeld to my left, our superintendent, Andy Sarno, who's our chief financial officer at the far end of the table, and Sandy Heller, our board secretary. So we'll begin this evening with some opening remarks from Dr. Michelle Langenfeld.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As we begin tonight, I would like to just share some thoughts in regard to the budget that we are presenting for 2016-17. First of all, it's important to recognize the budget reflects a balanced budget this year, which did mean that we had to do some shifting of dollars and cutting back of additional requests and proposals for this school year. But what you will see is an increase in additional teachers, supports, and resources needed to address the addition of 428 new English language learners. And I believe even more students have joined us since that this number. And our English language learner population overall now represents those, both in the program and those that have exited, represent 30.6 percent of our overall student population here in the Green Bay area public schools. With our 40 facilities in the district, many of them ranging in age from 60 to 100. To keep them maintained well, we've had to do some deferment means. And but what that means, though, is we have to keep and be mindful of those maintenance costs and make sure that we have adequate budget to meet those needs as well. And and not defer them too far down the road because we want to make sure everything is well maintained. We have increased transportation costs that continue to increase. And so we've been working hard. District Transportation Committee will be up and running shortly again to eliminate any kind of challenges so that our students can get to the various pathways and programming. As you recall, we did add some additional vans for our students as a cost savings, but also as the ability to transport our students throughout the district at a cheaper cost than a full bus ride. And we do continue to incur some additional costs for private schools. And I think that when the district is, in particular, when the district is not in session, and I think Mr. Sarno will speak to that just briefly. We want to make sure that we have the ability to address the needs of a competitive environment that we're now in for hard-to-fill positions. So you'll see some funding set aside to address that. And then we also saw an increase of a million dollars to support special education students who have opened and rolled out, and that's because of a shift in legislation. And I think, Mr. Sarno, you could possibly address that as well. But the budget that you see is our best effort to ensure that we achieve our district priorities around academic excellence and personalized pathways, engagement, and thriving workforce. We've done our best to keep the reductions or shifts of dollars away from the students or directly impacting them. And also, you will see in the budget a placeholder for salary increases so that we can remain competitive in the market. Again, it is a balanced budget. So that concludes my remarks about the budget.
All right. Thank you. If you, Amy, could comment. Michelle referenced the vans and being able to transport students. And I learned last Thursday, and I didn't know, and I just think the rest of the board should know what we're doing in terms of the personalized pathways aspect of transportation and how that's been working this year.
Yeah, great question, and that is something. So we began the buses last year, sort of a little over a year into it. This is the central hub in our transportation department as we take a look at not just our regular student transportation, of which I did, we did change that title for that object code. But we've added those buses. It is, number one, more cost-effective, and then, number two, it provides flexibility that we didn't have under a cost-effective means to get some students around. So it's everything from student IEPs where we're delivering services at various locations to some of the pathways, making sure that we do have some type of transportation available for certain populations of students. So the vans are full. They are. In fact, we've talked about expanding them under some kind of model. Right now, we have drivers that are, we're fully staffed finally. I can show an increase in the drivers from last year to this year. But it's because we weren't fully staffed last year. But our routes were, I think, I believe, that were efficient, and we're doing good things for students. Otherwise, would not be an option. Sometimes it is on metro route lines, but the timing just doesn't work. And sometimes it's on areas that there isn't another form of transportation short of a yellow bus or a taxi ride that's fairly expensive. So I know that Mr. Willebenberg in Transportation last year did a comparison of what the costs were per ride, and where it would have been a $15 ride with a taxi, we're under $8. So it's about half the price of a taxi ride, and it's significantly even lower under a yellow bus.
Do we use those for McKinney-Vento students?
On occasion, we do, where we have pockets of them. We utilize the yellow buses where possible. But if there's a student that we're required through McKinney-Vento to transport, and we don't have a bus going by, it actually sometimes is more cost-effective instead of rerouting the yellow bus to pick them up with one of the vans.
Because I imagine we don't have huge pockets of homeless students at one school that go to another, so.
Correct.
All right.
Geographically speaking, there are some areas of the district that we don't have yellow buses going, so.
All right. At this point, we don't have anyone here for the public comments time. So I think instead of giving the same overview that was given last week, because that's available in last week's tape. But I'm going to ask you to go through, we had, we asked quite a few questions last week. If you could go through the document that has the answers to our questions, just so the last week, and now can have the answers to our questions.
It's nice to be able to share this information. Thank you. 12 questions asked last Monday at the board deliberations, so we do have some responses for this. And if you have any additional questions or would like any additional follow-up, please let me know. What's a healthy debt level? So present us more detail about the health of debt, healthy level of debt. 10 largest school districts. I did ignore Milwaukee, so I really have the nine largest, including us. I also included the city of Green Bay, Brown County, per request. And then, as well, I reached out to NWTC to see what they have as well. So there's a matrix that we've created. So we have the nine large districts, an average of 7.74. Currently, Green Bay is at 4.03. If you actually take out Green Bay, because we're on the lower end of that, if you take out Green Bay, the eight district average is 8.2. So we're more than half of the average. Also created, include the information, Fresh Wabanon at 1.85 percent, fairly low. DePere, 16.25, as well as Howard-Swamaco at 14.23. So that also includes any cash flow, any, just any debt that they have that's on the books. And so you'll actually notice, one of the, one of the things that I did not include in last week's presentation, I had it at about 3.5 percent. It's actually 4.03. The difference there is that the DPI actually included short-term borrowing, which we were paying this off right at the tail end of. So I included that now, so it's consistent. We're at 4.03.
The state average is all 124 school districts.
Yep, correct. Every school district that was on the DPI's register, 11.75 percent. So approximately three times our rate, so. Also, Brown County, their maximum, or excuse me, where they're at right now is 15.4 percent of their available debt. City of Green Bay is at 49 percent, and at NWTC is 2.9 percent. I did, and I alluded to it, as we take a look at our credit rating, one of the sections is amount of debt. So similar to when you go to the bank, same with us, is how much debt do we have? Now, school districts are obligated to pay their debt, and if we dissolve, because of whatever reason, our neighboring districts that pick up our students also pick up the debt. So something catastrophic would have to happen, but yet, at the same time, it is interesting that that is one of the factors. Up to 20 percent of our credit rating is due to how much debt we currently have. In that section right now, we exceed, we're exceedingly high. Second question?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah, please. I'm sorry.
I was sort of taken back by the city of Green Bay and what its debt is. I'm sure there's some sort of explanation, just sort of sticks out from everything else, doesn't it? But I don't know what Aloeys is or some of the other villages, but I don't know whether that's good or bad.
Well, again, you know, school districts are the only governmental body in Wisconsin that have to go to a referendum for any long-term debt. You know, city of Green Bay, Brown County, Village of Aloe, they want to borrow $20 or $25 million for sewer reconstruction or road repair or a new municipal building. All they have to do is go to the city council, the county board, get a majority vote, and they're on their way. Here, we have to spend hundreds and hundreds of staff hours and board hours and trying to convince the community to vote for it. And then, obviously, delays things because you have to wait for it.
All they have to do, have you gone to a city council meeting or a county board meeting?
I've been to many of them in my lifetime, believe me.
No, Mike, real quick, tech colleges, do they have to go to referendum now?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's another, so, yep. Andrew, did you have a question?
Yeah, so are these, are these percent of, is this percent of a statutory debt limit? Or is this percentage of, like, a debt ratio to overall budget?
Yep, percent of statutory debt limit. So we're allowed up to 10 percent of our property values, who are worth $8 billion. We could technically have 800 million debt. We're at 4.03 percent of that, 800 million.
Okay, do the, do the cities have the same?
They have similar.
Okay.
Yep.
So that's also based off of the city's debt limit, too?
Correct.
And the county's debt limit?
Similar.
Okay.
Any other questions on the first? Great question, and I actually reviewed last year's questions, and this was one of them. And we said we were going to talk about it at some point. I didn't know it was going to be a full year later. We should, we should talk about fund balance a little bit. The DPI, they will not weigh in. They give some good information, and there's a link there if you'd like to visit. I think you can go to the DPI website and just put in "fund balance", and that website should pop up. It's a good explanation, but they don't weigh in what it should be. Most individuals that I've worked with in the past say 15 to 18 percent is fairly healthy. Any more than that, there's still, it still does serve a purpose. The primary purpose is for cash flow. The second thing is for debt rating, which we've already spoken about a little bit. A third, third item is for non-recurring expenses that just aren't budgeted. You end up having a roof that fails, it wasn't budgeted, you needed to get it done right now. Or a boiler that goes down in the middle of winter that wasn't budgeted. Those are the types of things that fund balance are for. So those three purposes, again, our fund balance is at about 15.69 percent. Approximately 11.1 million of that is for our health insurance fund balance that has to be used for health insurance. So we are at the 15 percent. Interestingly enough, though, and I thought it was a smidge high, but Schenk, which I respect their recommendation or their opinion, I think is a good way to put it because it's been in our management letter the last several years, is 25, 20 to 25 percent. So I think, again, based on some of our demographics of who we are and where we get our money from and when we receive that money, that could be a demographic of us because as we receive more state aid, District B might receive more property taxes, and they come in at different points in the year. That could vary. So we still do need to, short of the energy efficiency exemption, need to short-term borrow. So we didn't have to last year because of the referendum tailing out. This show with the energy efficiency exemption, we're fine. But typically, we wouldn't need to short-term borrow yet. So that was that first point.
Andy, would you have a recommendation for us, or do you have one now? Our last referendum, was it three years ago? We used $2 million in fund balance. Would you have a recommendation whether we do a similar thing this year?
Yeah, that's a great question, and I think we had some initial discussions about that when we were gearing up this past summer. Fiscally, I don't know how we would say yes. I don't know if I can say yes to that. Politically, that might be a little bit of a different answer. I think it might need to be a consideration. But having spent fund balance last year for some purposes, some intent, I don't know. It would not be wise. I think it would begin to affect our credit rating more than we would want it to if we did. So at this point in time, I'd be conservative and say, no, that would not be a wise thing to do.
Sure, we'll be having that conversation a little bit further down the road. But I think for, well, for political purposes, to show the public that we were willing to tap any resource we had to keep their taxes low. And we did. There was no tax impact the last referendum.
Right.
Okay.
Any other questions on the second one? Let's talk about Fund 80, our community service fund, a little bit. Three primary things that we have in our Fund 80. It is offset, it is a levy. We've kept the levy flat for the last several years. It is offset by any fees that we collect or whatnot. The first one is a community learning center, non-grant, because we do have some grants that help supplement or even supplant these offerings, after-school, before-school stuff, activities, programs. But approximately $1.2 million of CLC money is Fund 80, again, off of the levy. It serves 1,051 students this last year that participated in these 11 schools 30 or more days. So a little over 1,000 students. Danes, Doty, Eisenhower, Fort Howard, Howe, Jefferson, Keller, Lincoln, and Nick Lay, Sullivan, and Tank. Additionally, there were 94 family offerings, that, different events and whatnot, where parents and siblings were invited to participate. And those, I think Cory was proud of, proud of those to be able to offer that. Second topic, middle school athletics, $580,000, and this is literally athletics. We do have our other academic co-curriculars out of our general fund. We had a five-year average of 2,076 participants in middle school athletics. Could be duplicate students, but that was the number of students on average over the five years. We're verifying this information. This was the first time that we'd looked at that. This is the best estimate that we have at the time, based on the extraction that we were able to do. I know folks are aware of it, and so we're still working on that a little bit. But I wouldn't imagine that it would differ greatly. Third thing, we have school and community resource officers. There's nine full-time SCROs totaling about $1.1 million. We have them at our four comprehensive high schools. We have them at our four middle schools, and then one at Manoka Hill as well. As well, it's important to remember that where they're housed at those nine sites, they do serve all of the elementaries that feed into those secondary schools.
If people wonder why the school district picks up the entire tab for this and not a sharing, goes back, Katie, were you on the board 15 or so years ago? The school district, and, well, the school district and the city would split the cost of crossing guards and split the cost of school resource officers. Agreement was made 15 years ago that, to keep things simpler and cleaner, the city would pay for all of the crossing guards, and we would pay for the resource officers. And that's when that happened.
Right.
About 15, Katie?
That was about 10.
In case that comes up, so why, why doesn't the police department shift? Well, that's what the agreement was made.
Right.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I appreciate.
Are you ready for questions? I'm sorry.
Please.
Knowing later how many non-public school students and families participate in these programs, community learning centers or middle school athletics.
Can you ask the question one more time, please?
I would like to know how many non-attending public school students participate in these activities and their families.
If I could also add, we could provide, and we have provided, I think, how we reach out to the community and let them know these opportunities are available because sometimes they don't take advantage because they have their own school communities as well, to participate in their own school athletics as well. Is that accurate?
Yes, I just, I don't know if we'll be able to specifically pull back or not the athletic piece.
The numbers of students which, who are and who are not.
If you don't have that available for this past year, maybe for the current year as you go.
I think we'd have to track it by U-School and AD individually. I don't think it could pull back on campus, but I think that.
Well, selling point to our community is that we're using this money because it is open to all students. So I think we need to let people know that. Thank you.
Question number four, how much does the taxpayer, on average, for the schools levy with some examples of home prices? This is a little bit difficult to answer. Property values went up by 1.4 percent from last year to this year. Does that mean that $150,000 home went up by 1.4 percent? We don't know. In fact, not only is it not property-specific, it's not even municipality-specific because there could have been a municipality who has reassessed. That value went up or down, and then that greatly varies. And I've gotten questions in the past, my property taxes went up, why? Where do you live? That's one of the first questions I ask. Town of Scott, well, you guys were just reassessed, and maybe your value went up. And again, I'm using that as an example. I don't know if it happened or not. But I, so we do have those because there's not just the reassessment, which is an increase in the value. It's also the growth that my empty lot next to me now has a house on it, and that's able to be taxed at a much higher rate than the vacant land. So what I ended up doing, though, and I, Dr. Wagner, I was trying to capture the essence of your question, is that we had a tax or a mill rate last year of $10.16. That's the proposed, and it's tentative at this point in time. I would wager that it's going to be $10.16 when we're meeting here next week. But that $100,000 or $150,000 or $200,000 home, those taxes essentially are going to remain unchanged. The only way that they would change is if the municipality or the individual property either but generally speaking, the taxation rate is $10.16 for both years. Does that answer?
Well, I like this because someone on the outside can look at and they can have a sense of the taxes, how much is that raised because of the school district? And since we're a big piece of the property tax, it's nice to know when we truly are part of that and not just being a whipping boy for other governmental entities.
Yeah, absolutely. Fact sheets, question number five, you do have that in front of you. I will make sure you get both pages here before the end of the evening. We did discuss, any, well, we'll wait since you don't have the full document. Title one, there was a question, we did have some discussion at the table last Monday. In fact, Nancy Chartier joined us and provided some clarification on that. And she did provide a little additional clarification. I was thankful for that because things did change a year ago. So how they had been, yep. So that's her response there, and let me know if you do have any follow-up questions. So I was thankful for that knowledge. Question number seven, wages and benefits. So on the, I forget which page is, oh, page 10. $6.7 million bullet that I talk about, the general fund increases in wages and benefits, have given some, and there is a lot more detail because we provide that on page 11, object breakdown, which breaks out just about every single position we have in the budget book. And then, as well, it breaks down all of the benefits. And so we can see where some of those positions increased. Now, some of it is due to available steps or lanes for some staff. Some of it is due to some changes in the way that we're approaching those programs. What I can say in addition to that, and it's not going to total $6.7 million, but I wanted to bullet some, some of the major dollars. So as an example, $1.7 million steps and lanes for all staff who are entitled to that movement. So educators, we have some sliding ranges for hourly staff, so that totals $1.7 million. Did include a placeholder per previous discussions that we've had with you. So that is budgeted right now. We've got some additional instructional positions, about $1.1 million. They're under different various line items, as I indicated on page 11. Admin, managers, technical, professional positions, $130,000. It's been equated to additional staff or some of that movement that's allowed for some of those positions. I lumped a group together, paraprofessionals, noon hour supervisors, clerical, and a few very, other various positions, $175,000 increases. Small amount of that was increases in positions, fair amount of that was lane positions and whatnot. The other benefits that are actually tied to, and I'll talk about a large benefit in just a moment, but increases in benefits tied to salaries that, Wisconsin Retirement System, FICA, they're all salary or wage-driven. So those increases are a couple hundred thousand dollars that we have comparing last year to this year. An actual increase in health insurance, not related to any other activity except for the fact that more people are taking health insurance, or they've changed from single to family, which we now have younger staff getting married, having children and whatnot. $1.5 million increase compared to last year.
Do we have raw numbers of the number of staff added in this budget? I mean, we have the breakdown on figures, still doesn't tell me how many staff we added.
Boy, I don't, I don't know if we do. I would assume that it's available with some calculations if we don't already have it. Would you like that?
It's just, I think it's helpful for the, for the public to know that we added 34 teachers and 17 paras and three secretaries, you know, you know what I mean? That is, the $6.7 million isn't all just increases in salary and benefits, that there's actual people.
If I could bring you back on that, too. I've been asking for some time for a table of organization. And I would like to see, particularly with Object 20112, a further breakdown of that. Everybody who's not a teacher, who has a license, is pretty much lumped in there. I think we need a breakdown by function, possibly by location, you know, building administration versus central administration. And if possible, to go back to show that, I mean, if you look at the comparison to 2000, from 2014 to 2017, that's almost a 30 percent increase there. And I'd like to see what, what that is. And where are we at the table of organization?
We started, I have the administrative one down. It doesn't have people listed. It has the positions listed. HR will have to do the other ones.
Any idea when, when we might be able to see that?
I'd have to talk with HR, too, if they're going to be the ones completing it. If you'd like, I can see what I can't do about getting these other two pieces and then work with them and come up with a timeline.
And the one you worked on, Sandy, is that, that's just this year, does it compare to previous years?
No, it's just going to have an updated one. It's not going to have computers on it.
Do we have previous years as well?
I do, but it's going to be very difficult to match because it, it actually is an org chart. So it actually is, you know, it was the superintendent and then who's underneath them. So it's actually, you know, an org chart. So it doesn't.
Some of them are in different places.
Yes.
But the numbers are in there, I believe.
The number of people will be in there.
That would be helpful.
So I have that one done.
What's HR working on?
They'll have to work on the number of teachers. I don't have that at all.
Okay, that's an org chart?
It's not really an org chart. You're asking for an org, and it's not going to be an org chart. It's going to have to be like a, just a comparison.
An employee comparison, yeah.
Basically, table, yeah.
Basically, yeah, table.
I assume you'd like it broken up. Add a minimum by special ed, ESL, secondary, elementary, and middle school or something?
And I don't know how easy that is going to be to do. I don't know what the system does.
To my point, too, the, you know, the numbers are sufficient there. I don't, you know, we don't need to know who they are or even where they are, but the numbers would be.
That's it, that being justified to the public? That being justified to the public, we added 6 million, yes, but we added, you know, 71 staff members because of ELL, you know, because of what other, you know, increase in enrollment at the 4K or whatever it is, and you can say this is why.
If I'd be correct in saying, it's more important right now for this document to know how many staff have been added and in what areas, and then, not necessarily for this document, but shortly thereafter, like to know the whole breakdown.
Sure.
Okay.
As to me, yeah, no, I think, I think raw numbers would be helpful.
Alan used to do one, so we can look at what he used to do in the budget book.
Okay.
A few years back was.
Okay.
I think that's probably the circle.
Okay, thank you. Question number eight, description of the increase, a $300,000 increase in other revenues. That's actually the sale of assets, so when we have some unused desks that are just outdated, we're not using them. Oddly enough, there are still some places buying them even for scrap. And then as well, the E-rate, it's a federal program where we have discounted services related to technology, internet services and those types of things. They're at the point now, typically, we could say we want a discounted bill at the eratable rate, it would be 80% off of the typical bill. And claim it as a revenue. We've always claimed it as a discounted bill. Last year's E-rate was so delayed, their process was so delayed, that it caused us to not be able to do any discounted bills. Therefore, last year's services are actually becoming this year's revenues. So a large majority of that $300,000 is due to E-rate revenues from last year's expenses. It's very similar to categorical aid and special ed. We get aid this year based on special ed services from last year. So I don't know if it's going to be a trend that continues. I know I've been working with technology, Diane, John, and we're, we're working through that, but we need to anticipate it appropriately. So that's, that's why the increase with, with that line item. Any questions? Question number nine, student travel to student transportation. That has been made, it's actually reflected in the document that I have. If you'd like me to print out those couple of pages, I'd be happy to, but that has been changed. And we will be uploading the full budget doc onto the website. In fact, it might already be there actually, with those changes reflected. Interfund payments, object 20390, $228,000. What I was told is that two years ago when we saw this activity, and now when we're seeing it, there's a two-year window where we weren't doing it quite right. We weren't logging it appropriately. I don't know what happened for those two years, but we've made the correction. So these are indirect costs related to grants, and so when we have a title grant, we're allowed for processing. So I'm not coded to the grant, but I still provide services or payroll, is paying the title people. We're allowed to charge the small, it's a 1.48%, 1.48? Yeah, 1.48% to administer these types of grants. And so that's what this revenue is, excuse me, what this expenditure is. So it's, actually ends up being a revenue for the district. So we're able to claim this money, it turns into a revenue. It's shown as an expenditure in this line item, but all through the grants. Expenditure on the grant, revenue for the district.
So it's really a wash then?
Yeah, yep. But it does help pay for some of those services, you know, all the coordination and whatnot. Another difficult question, question number 11, how much does busing for private school cost us because they don't follow the same calendar as the district? Interesting. So if you say a school, regardless of private or public, has 180 days of instruction, there are some days that we operate and they don't, of which we might have less routes, but there might be some students that are on normal district routes that we're not able to capture any efficiencies. There are some days when they're operating that we're not. We might have to run the normal routes that they would have that are just private school routes, but then in addition to that, those students that go to private schools, we have to run special routes. So it, we have 17 private schools that are all on different calendars. I think Jeremy in Transportation could have worked for the last 40 hours, eight hours a day for the last full week, and he still wouldn't have been able to complete this. So I think the point is, is that there are some inefficiencies because of this. We haven't been able to quantify it. That being said, the private schools started before we did this year. And those days, and again, please.
And they always do.
Yep.
They always do, and I think that's the piece that.
They're not bound by state law.
Right. That's the, even if we could get that chunk, if that's possible, because I know there are other days through the school year that might be a little different, that started the school year piece.
Yep. What we were able to do though is, he did go through that start of the school year, and just those few days, and again, might be up to five days, one of the school, one of the 17 schools might only be a couple of days, but just those few days before school translated $20,600. That we know. So just those few days. I know it's not the best information, if you'd like us to dig in at some point to try to monitor this.
No.
I don't know.
We can't do anything about it, but it does give us a dollar amount to us.
Just a good sense.
Yeah. Any other questions, comments? Question number 12, this was the last, large increase in the function 179000, what is that? What's in there? Have given a breakout, several different things. So the, the accounting that we use, it's just a big outline. So the more digits you use, the more detail it is. So literally, the DPI says function 179000 is other special needs, but then we've been using sub-functions. So we use 179100 for ESL. It's about 12, almost 13 million dollars. Adeble and non-adeble grant, title 3A money, that's all ESL, so that's all coded under that.
So out of that though, what you're saying is the 8.2% was adeble at the state level, and we got about $500,000 from the federal to, to address the 12,737.
Yeah, yep. And that'd be seen as a revenue this year, but yep, that was, this year, we have ESL budget of 12.7 million dollars.
Right. But again, it's really important to recognize that while we say it's adeble, it's, we do get some dollars, but 1 point something million and, and $500,000, and so the rest comes out of the general revenues, is my point.
Yep. Very, very valid point. Function 179300 is listed as customized education, so schools receive an allocation based on the number of students. Programs that have customized ed have a supplemental budget for things that they're doing above and beyond normal education, totals about $180,000, a focus or a program outside again of that typical education. So some of our STEM, our fine arts, some of those programs, gifted and talented, those programs are supplemental, they're all quoted under that $180,000 under this function. And prior to this, the reason that you're seeing an increase from last year to this year, prior years to this year, is that previously, the last three digits of our long, it's a 24-digit accounting number, the last three digits is the project number, they're really reserved for special occasions, a grant, really just grants, that's about it. The DPI has that reserved. We've used them kind of willy-nilly in the past to keep track of money. This year, we changed away from that, and when we pull that grant money away, we have to find another spot, which the function, which is really the who, it's ESL, it's customized ed. That's why we're using the function a little bit different. So in the past, we might not have used this 179 function, but it was listed under a project number with a generic function, non-instruction, non, non, non-different, undifferentiated instruction or something like that. So we're using this a little bit different. So these are just the programs listed. They were, they were in different parts of the budget prior to now. The academy and pathways, so Manoka Hills Academy in East, and then Preble in West has pathways totaling about $2 million. Again, if you're not aware of what these two programs are, they're essentially competency-based attainment programs for our students. It consists of all the wages, all the benefits, all the services, all the supplies for these two different various programs. GED, function 179500, it's an alternative diploma program. Function 179600 is PBIS or positively based intervention services, $257,000. What this does is it teaches behavioral expectations and rewards students for following those expectations. Function 179700 is forward bound, $77,000 approximately, another credit deficiency program. It allows students to catch up with their cohorts, be able to graduate.
What page is that on?
That, yep. So all of the functions. You will see that on, on page seven. And so this is by function or what I like to call the who. So it talks about elementary instruction, secondary, and it, it breaks down the different instructions, the supports, and then the program transfers.
So this.
You will see the, so the other special needs.
That's that range.
That 170000.
But you're calling it 1, you're saying it's 179.
Oh, I broke, yeah, I, I broke it down.
This is the breakdown of that category.
Yeah, that, this was, this was the large, everything else in the past, all the 170s, we started using the 179 a lot more. So these are all on, all the 179s, which is why you'll see that large increase. Well, we have been using ESL, I'm sorry, but, yeah. But I captured, I captured all the 179s, which was what we're using.
Are you able to pull out, I mean, is this all that's pullable from that?
We can break it down into even.
Okay, I'm just curious, because we've talked in the past many times about wanting to understand costs of programs. So for instance, our Avid program, or, you know, our, we just added the ABMR intervention program, those kinds of things. Are those categorized enough that we can get a sense of what those programs cost?
That's our goal, and so that's why we started looking.
So this is a start of getting there eventually, okay. So each year, you'll add more?
We're identifying that, and I wouldn't be surprised if ABMR wasn't, but, yeah.
Okay.
Well, at the secondary, I think it'd be fairly easy to do that. I mean, understanding the elementary, everything, $1,000 undifferentiated, it's all lumped in the same unless you're doing something to, to further code out subject areas.
Yeah, so with the elementary, because of that, a large chunk of it is in that elementary instruction. Some of the different things that we're doing though is you see art, FIAID, reading, reading's a great one that we do break out at the elementary level. So they are math, they're breaking those function out even at the elementary level, specifically for the supplies or the services that they're buying, so we can keep track of that.
So, okay. Then, I mean, specifically ABMR, then you would be able to, to pull out, because you've got, you've got numbers for professional development that are in there and, and for them, so actually, you could break it, break that all out.
Yep. And why I like this is that it, you can run a report and say 179100, you're going to grab all of the ESL activity. And that, that's why I like that. It's the who, it's these programs, it's these offerings that we have.
Yeah, I mean, I, I want to add to what Brenda said, and we've talked about this before, as you go down the road, and particularly finances continue to get more troublesome as they have been, as you look at programs, number one, obviously, the key thing is, is it academically viable, is it helping kids learn? To me, that's the most important thing. But going along with that, what does a program cost? So as we get, as you evaluate programs, and it costs this amount, it's helping kids, so you say, well, do we want to expand this program? Or if you look at a program that's kind of costly and it's not really doing much to advance student learning, then well, maybe that's something we need to cut back or eliminate. Pretty hard for us to make those decisions now without having that breakdown.
Has the board in the past, in, for the veterans on the board, had an opportunity to have, have kind of an overview or a primer of the, of the budgeting system, what the numbers mean, how, how they're utilized? You haven't. It's, I think it's worth, worth our while. I mean, the Western system is, it's kind of complicated, but once you get into it, you can find specific things when you understand that, you know, Fund 10 is all of this, Fund 50 is all of it, and then the location, you can go right down to, you know, what are they spending on, on math instruction at Preble High School for salaries, I mean, right down the line.
But it has to be coded.
Has to be coded right.
Well, yeah, I'd be garbage in, garbage out, but I'm assuming that, that things are being coded appropriately when, when they're being budgeted.
So this is, this is the first year then that we've coded all of the staff to their right locations, and we've always used the right function, the who, it's a math or social studies. Their location number. So we should be able to say, yep, the Preble math department is this big, costs this much with this FTE. So we're, we're getting.
This is the first year we've done that?
Yep. I think one of the.
We've, we've had a way to do it in the past, it just wasn't coded there. So you go into BiTech and be able to.
We've had a way to do it for 30 years, I mean, that's all that system is.
Mr. Dorf, it goes with what Mr. Blackett said about previous conversations of the board, we want to know where it actually is.
I'm sorry, I'm not.
It goes back to what Mr. Blackett said, that the board had asked for that because we were just getting it by function and not by location, so Mr. Serno's credit, he's been able to do that now for us.
It's thick budgets, but they were never, they couldn't pull. They were never coded right.
Programmes. Yeah, we used to get budgets like this, but they still weren't coded enough that you could just say, how much does Avid cost?
Right, you'd have to.
And pull that out, or how much does, you know, this program at Dan School cost, yeah, we've never had the ability to do that.
We're getting there.
Yeah, good.
I think to Mr. Dorf's comment, too, we've had that conversation that we would like to do. There is a program that school districts are using to, to bring folks up to speed, not only the board, but also the, the people in leadership roles around what the budget means. And we've talked about, and talked with Mike Clark from Baird, and I can't think, I can't remember what it's called. It's a, it's a budget.
It's a board game. It's to help understand, I think it's called the school finance board game or something like that, but it.
It's only, it's only, but people, people who have used it in different districts, and I know Brian Haynes is, is trained, and I know several superintendents who are trained in this. This is not.
No.
And it's really understanding.
It's like a chutes and ladders, but it helps you understand.
The different buckets.
Revenue limits and where the money's coming from. You know, I can put the equation up on the board and say, revenue limits equal property taxes plus state aid, but when you're playing a board game and you roll the dice and it says, uh-oh, your state categorical aid went down by 2%, you have, it, it helps you understand what that is.
The impact.
Yeah. So what school districts have done is they've, they've brought this in, they have facilitators, you have to have a certified facilitator.
It's a serious thing.
Yeah, and, and deliver it, and we can take a look at that.
But I think it really helps to get people understanding the buckets of money.
So there's some things that we're talking about.
So, I mean, we would bring that forward, but we have been talking about it because we do think it's really important that everybody understand the budget and, and to Andy's credit and the team's credit, we've really been trying to make sure everything is coded accurately. I'm not sure at all as yet. We keep finding things, but we're working on it. Part of it is the, am I, and correct me if I'm wrong, Andy, but the, the actual program that we use, the BiTech, has not been, it's not nimble, it's whatever we put in it that can address it. And so we have Peter.
Lena.
Yeah, who, who is.
Programmer.
Programming and reprogramming and programming so that we can get out of it what we want. So it's been ongoing.
We're a big district, it's a very, it's a very intensive financial software, so, yeah.
And many districts use it, so it's not, it's not like, it's not good, it's just that it's, it's been hard and, and the coding has been all over the place, and sometimes people just code stuff and put it over there anyway, so. We're working on it.
All right. Are there any other questions? Thank you, Andy, for providing this, this is really good information. Go ahead.
The budget's online right now, and it's, it's be added then to that information. Thank you.
All right, and we, we don't have anyone for public engagement, but I, I do want to point out that we did receive two letters from people that wanted to have input about the. budget tonight, but weren't able to come in person and deliver those, and I think all board members have a copy of those letters. So if there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are adjourned.